You ready? That's the real question.
I'm ready.
Okay, then I'm ready.
All right, we're live now. So first of all, it's eight thirty. So good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you to the Sweetwater County Commissioners Meeting for today. And before we call to order, a couple announcements is that we want to announce the courthouse is open and doing business and doing business safely and responsibly. So it is opened. Also, I would like to highly recommend to the public that may be listening or that may pick up on this later is we offer a lot of services here at the courthouse online. And we encourage that those services be used in order to make sure that you as citizens of Sweetwater County, but as well the employees of Sweetwater County as well, stay safe and make it through safely with what's going on with this pandemic. So with that, call our meeting to order. There is a quorum present. I'm all commissioners. And with that, I would ask everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And you can turn off your mute and join as well as you. I pledge allegiance to the of the United States of America. And to the
For which it stands.
Under God, Indivisible,
And justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. First of all, we'll look at approving the agenda. And just so the Commissioners make can have a note is there will be an executive session with the scholarship tab will come out of the executive session, announce those scholarships. And then during our regular executive session, there will be personnel, legal, as well as real estate conversations. So Commissioners, if there's nothing else to add to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shane Field to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second that motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next bit of business is approval of the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty. Have our regular meeting Commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review those minutes and I'll stand for a motion when one of you are ready.
This Chairman make a motion to approve the minutes of the May fifth meeting, twenty twenty.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson to approve the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same time. Thank you. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next order of business is approving our minutes from our special meeting on May eleventh, twenty twenty, and that was consideration of opening the county building. So I'll stand for a motion when Commissioners are ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of May eleventh.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May eleventh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Our next order of a business will be the tab you'll be the acceptance of the bills. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'll make a motion to approve the county vouchers and warrants, the monthly statements, the bonds, the AB to ABates and rebates and the hospital expenditures.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next order of business will be public hearings and budget amendments. And with that, I welcome Ms. Bonnie Berry. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Great.
Loud and clear.
Great. Okay, we have three budget amendments this morning. The first one is Resolution twenty dash zero five dash C L dash zero one. This is a budget amendment to increase the operating expenditures in the general fund for general county administration in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars and decrease the general county reserves cash carryover by the same amount, twenty five thousand dollars. The this increase is due to shredding costs and also some legal fees for some disputed tax payments. Are there any additional questions on this before public hearing?
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry? With there being no questions, at this point, I will open up the floor for public hearing dealing with Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero one. And that is a budget amendment of twenty five thousand dollars. And it's coming out of the county reserves and going into the general county administration under operating. Public hearing is now open. Any comments? Tim, anything coming in?
No comments. That I have.
Okay, we'll give it another couple more. Any comments? One last time, any public comments for Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero one budget amendment? Public hearing closed. Commissioners, what's your pro? What's your pleasure regarding Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would approve Resolution twenty dash oh five dash C L dash oh one. A Sweetwater County budget amendment where we'll be taking twenty five thousand dollars and putting it into the general county administration from cash carryover.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lloyd to approve this budget amendment as stated. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
Wonder why Bonnie's so smiley today? She's got something up her sleeve. I don't know.
I'm glad we're open, open back up to the public.
Yes. I agree. Okay, with that Commissioners, with no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bonnie, you've got another one for us. Okay, Bonnie.
Okay. Are you ready for the second one?
Yep, we're ready.
Sorry, I was I was interrupted. Okay, Resolution twenty dash zero five dash C L dash zero two is our next budget amendment. This one increases the general fund expenditures in elections capital by seven hundred dollars and decreases the expenditures in the general fund elections operating by seven hundred dollars. So essentially just moving seven hundred dollars from operating into capital in elections. This is for the purchase of two headsets. This will need to be opened up to the public, but prior to that, are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Berry regarding this resolution, Commissioners? With no questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Oh, no, we'll open it up. Now we'll open up for a public hearing Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero two, which is decreasing the general fund in elections operation by seven hundred dollars and putting that seven hundred dollars into the elections capital. So we'll open it for a public hearing. Floor is now open. Anything coming in yet, Tim?
Nothing's coming in. Thanks.
Thank you. Floor is open for a public hearing. Any comment on public hearing? Last call. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero two budget amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Make motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion, Commissioners? With no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Bonnie, you have one more, I believe.
Do have one more. Resolution twenty dash zero five dash C L dash zero three is a Sweetwater County budget amendment. This one increases the expenditures in the general fund for risk management capital by thirty nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and ninety six cents. It decreases the expenditures in the general fund risk management operating by thirty nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and ninety cents. And this is due to a vehicle. It was, I believe it was in the sheriff's office. It was totaled and paid for by the insurance. So it was replaced with capital.
Okay. Any questions for Bonnie Commissioners regarding this budget amendment? I can presume the officer was okay.
I presume that.
Yeah, I can too. Thank you. With no commission questions, further questioning from the Commissioners, I will open this Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero three for public comment. Floor is now open for public comment. Or public hearing. Any public comment on this budget amendment? Any comment? No comment, I will. Close this hearing for Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero three. Commissioners? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash oh three with the budget amendment totaling thirty nine thousand, three hundred and ninety and ninety six cents.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero three by Commissioner Shane Field. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further questions, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Bonnie, I think that's all for you.
That is all three. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for the good work. Commissioners, with that, we'll move on to our next item, and that is supposedly at is our our county residents concerned. And we're just a little bit late for that. So at this point in time, I'll open up the meeting for county residents concerns. And Tim will take a minute or two and wait and give you a chance to filter through them. We don't want any advertising. If we can possibly pick it up, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any public comment that's come through, so.
Thank you. With no public comment, we'll close this session for county residents concerns. We'll move right into Commissioner comments or reports. And Commissioner Lloyd, you're up first.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, we'll just start going over some of my liaison work over the last couple of weeks. Starbus wasn't able to have a meeting, but they continue to work on a altered type system that is working really well and still serving the needs of our citizens in the county. The library met last night and they will be opening here, I think around June first approximately. But I can tell you some of the things they're doing at this point is they are starting some curbside services today. People can request items. They will call and arrange a time for them to pick up the items. They are looking to open up a corridor to a bunch of other local state libraries on June first. And the county health has approved their plan and no other variances are needed. So they continue to move forward and look at reopening at the beginning of June, but are beginning curbside services today or tomorrow, depending on how I read that message. So in the next day or two, they will be offering curbside services. I've been in pretty constant contact at least once to twice a week with the events complex. And also have had contact with the Southwest Counseling either no either has no board just to stay updated of where they're at and appreciate their information and keeping in contact. I know the the events complex was able to meet with a couple of my fellow Commissioners last in the last couple of weeks, which I think was helpful for all parties involved. And they continue to move forward as they continue, as we continue just to see events cancel at this point. As far outside of that liaison work, I have met with some department officials and elected department heads and elected officials. Stayed in the loop in some of the COVID meetings, either through the Commission on Wednesdays or our local ECC briefings is available. Outside of that, spent a lot of time preparing for budget. I guess the only other couple of things I have is I really want to reach out and thank out to our custodial staff. I think they've done a great job in maintaining this building and especially as we go to open to be able to ensure we have a safe and healthy environment for not only the citizens that are using the building, but during the time the building was closed for employees and and there are kind of some unsung heroes in our departments. And so I, I really want to know, make sure the custodial's custodial staff knows their efforts are truly appreciated and they're doing a great job and we appreciate that. Also, was in here a little bit yesterday, doing some work. And then you can see this morning, you know, people have taken advantage of the courthouse being open and then just a kudos to our employees for, you know, really having some pretty active days the last couple of days with some pretty long lines with our changes and appreciate their willingness to step up and take care of our citizens and and the work they're doing also. Outside of that, just a thought I've had, I'd like to throw out, Mr. Chairman, is until we get through all of this COVID, I wonder if it would be important to have a public health officer or a member of public health maybe make a small presentation every meeting to keep us adept. So we're on the same page was a thought I had I wanted to share. And then the last thing I would like to throw out is you know, last week, Rock Springs had their individualized graduations and their graduation parade. And last night, I had the opportunity to watch Green River's graduation through a computer screen, which was kind of odd because halfway through the ceremony, I realized the kid I was watching was sitting next to me on the couch, having a soda and not on stage and and I just want to congratulate both graduating classes. As they read through the honors and the accolades of those students that will be graduating from those classes, it's a strong group of young leaders and young men and women that are going to represent this county well. And I think we see that in some of our scholarship applicants every year also. But I want to congratulate them and say, even though, you know, they didn't have the normal traditional graduation, they had something that set them apart. And this is just the first of many life challenges that I'll face. And if this is the biggest challenge they face, I'll trade them lives anytime. But congratulations to both graduating classes in some unnec- unneeded in some uncharted territory, but just congratulations for your good efforts. And that's all I have. Chair Chairman, when will?
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions for Commissioner Lloyd, fellow Commissioners? With no questions, I'll only make a statement and I can echo everything you're saying about the employees as well as those graduates made history. We hope hopefully there will never be a time where any future classes will have to go through this, you know, that type of thing, but it's it's history in the making, but it's sad history. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Up next is Commissioner Johnson. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. First, I have the Public Works Department report. Buildings, we have been working on getting all of the buildings ready to reopen, placing sneeze guards, hand sanitizing stations, and using other measures to protect the staff and the public. This is what you're both commenting on. And I'd also like to say that these people that work for Gene and his his crew, they've done an outstanding job. And it's very obvious to to me also. And I think the public sees that and appreciates that. Next, engineering Yellowstone Road is open and all the punch list items have been completed. If you haven't seen that, he's given us a couple of pictures on that. I've been out there a couple of times to to review that. And it's just, again, another outstanding job. And he also indicates that Cyril Brothers is approximately ninety five percent done with the earthwork on the Bar X Road. The project should be completed in a couple of weeks. The twenty twenty CMAC and dust control projects will bid tomorrow. Road and Bridge, we are currently fixing potholes and cleaning out the remainder of the colors North Rock Springs. Crews are also hauling base course to various roads to improve the cross section of these roads. Parks and Rec, the contractor poured concrete at the bicentennial pavilion yesterday for the floor. And that's the completion of Public Works Department's report. Next, the other item that we Mark Cotton and I have been working on is comments to the on the Ashley National Forest projects. And one of the things that we continue to seem to have problems getting across to relative to our comments is the importance of the NRA to Sweetwater County, State of Wyoming and the nation. NRA stands for National Recreation Area. That's what we have to protect that area for. We don't want it industrialized in any way, shape or form. And we continue to make comments on that. And it may come to the point that we may want to pass a resolution that we would all sign to to forward to the director of the the new director of the Ashley and make sure that they understand how important we feel that the NRA is to Sweetwater County and the state of Wyoming. And the next item that I'd comment on is the Rock Springs RMP. As you know, we have made comments on the RMP through the many years. I think it's roughly ten years now, and we've been at the table relative to that that document. And historically, I have been pushing to get that document completed. But now with the virus situation that's impacting the way that that document is headed. As you know, we've taken a position and it should be delayed. It's been delayed now for ten years and a few more months or possibly even a year, it should be delayed. It's extremely important to Sweetwater County and the state of Wyoming and again to the nation. And I don't know whether you've noticed that we've got a lot of support in the in the position that we've taken. There's been letters to the editor in the lander paper. The prior state director of the Bureau of Land Management has has supported our position on that. And but we still have had no feedback from the local Bureau of Land Management as to what they're going to do with that. And the fact that we're not having meetings on a monthly basis with the BLM leaves us kind of guessing as to what they might do. So there's been no, no response to our letter and we don't know where they're headed with that. I think they're receiving a lot of pressure from Washington to move forward with that document. We'll have to wait and see what happens. And that's the conclusion of my report. And I'll answer any questions that anyone might have.
Commissioner Johnson, along with the Ashley and that NRA, the good news is, and I know you know this already, is that new Ashley Ranger head of is a great guy to work with. We've been working with him through the COVID situation on closure of parks down there as well as the soft opening down there. Then also getting those businesses going by the middle of May. And he's done a wonderful job working with the response team during COVID. So I, you know, I'm very pleased with what I'm hearing and in time, I think he could grow into a routing. So but I agree with you on the absolute. Thank you.
Yeah, I I've had comments with him on many occasions and he's got a tough act to follow with Roddy Mear. Roddy understood the importance of that NRA to to all of us and bent over backwards to know what let us know what he was doing before he did it. And we need to keep pushing in that direction. It's extremely important to us.
Well, it's important to us and it's important to all those people in the county that depend on that recreation area. So thank you very much for your work in that area. With that, any questions for Commissioner Johnson? Okay, I guess I'm up next is, first of all, I regarding the incident command system, the Emergency Operating Center, which has been since March been used as out at the sheriff's office or training room. Our last briefing coming out of that room will be tomorrow morning with the Emergency Management Center out there after tomorrow will be dismantled and we will move it to even the command and the incident command team will be structured down. And we will move working more closely with public health. The briefing tomorrow will be a thirty day briefing. That'll go out for the COVID. Again, too, though, the group stands ready to mobilize again and to full fashion if necessary, but we're going to move into a skeleton crew on the incident command team and work from there and that type of thing. So that will be scaling down as of after tomorrow. And but we'll continue forward, working through the the response and a skeleton team for the incident command. So that's happening. Also, the Great Divide Economic Development Coalition, which is between Carbon County and Sweetwater County. As I reported in previous meeting, that the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies were finalized at the last meeting and approved. We finally have a copy that's digital. And when I one individual Christina who's worked with us very closely on that. She has the final draft or final copy and and I'll double check with her and make sure it's all in line. Once it is, I'll make sure everybody all Commissioners get a copy as well as our S E D C group. The meeting yesterday that we had to share with you is historically the Great Divide has headquartered in Carbon County. And because Carbon County does not at this point in time have a economic development person and our county has stood up the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition here at the courthouse. It's been requested. It's been requested that, that the headquarters be stationed here with, with our S E D C. I did visit a little bit with Eric ahead of time, but I also informed the group, Eric, that I would seek your input as commissioners, your support for that being here. The reason I would suggest that it, it come here and be housed here is in the past, that was heavily data driven out of Carbon County, not, not much Sweetwater County. Second of all, it'll provide an opportunity, well, it has moved in the direction of identifying a lot of Sweetwater County needs in it. Plus, Sweetwater County has been on the forefront of, of redrafting and reworking the present new SIDS. And that's been a lot with Christina's help. She's helped with it a lot because she, in the past, has used that document to acquire a number of grants with considerable dollars in the millions. And it would benefit us as a county to be the headquarters of that, which would mean basically moving over all the files that they have, which I don't believe are many. It can't be more than a part of a drawer, but it's just the history of it. And then, of course, our S E D C leadership working with the Great Divide and primarily working with the Secretary of Great Divide to set up meetings and that, that meet quarterly. So my question to you as commissioners is headquartering the Great Divide Economic Development Coalition here in Sweetwater County and under Eric with his department, Economic Development, would you be okay with that? I would, I'd just like to say I'd, I'd encourage it, having worked with it for four years. So any disapproval? Thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson?
I just would ask the question, you've discussed it with Eric. Eric did not mention that to me. How did Eric feel about that?
Commissioner Johnson, he, he did probably didn't have time to mention to you because the meeting was yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, and I only had the opportunity to ask him if that would be something that would work underneath that department. And knew I'd bring it up today and that type of thing. If he was uncomfortable with it, I, I told him it was totally, you know, I wouldn't bring it forward to the commissioners if he didn't feel comfortable with it. So if you feel the need to visit more with him before we move forward, that's up to you.
No, I think that's fine, as long as that you visited with him and he saw nothing wrong with it.
And, you know, and if, if down the road away, Amy requests to be the headquarters again, but I, you know, I'd resist that because I can see it so much more beneficial being here. So Commissioner Shanefield, you had a comment?
I'd just like to say that I think this is a great opportunity that we have been afforded because of moving S E D C under the county. And in my comments, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but I, I think this is a good thing.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, commissioners? Okay, with that, move on to what else I have here. Do wishes to headquarters, digital copies will come out. And then, of course, one of the things that we have later on in our executive session with the attorney will be generally to talk about their industrial siting and that type of thing. And that's all I'll say about it. Other than I would think it would be time to have co-leads set for the upcoming industrial siting for them. It's my understanding, it's going to be a little over three million dollars for the entities that are identified and that type of thing. I think we were hoping for more out of that siting, but it's going to be, I understand, a little over three million and that type of thing. So I, I'd like to ask at this point in time, Lauren and Jeff, you haven't co-leaded on anything for industrial siting. Is this one you'd like to co-lead? Either one of you, or what would you like?
I would love to be involved.
Okay.
Happy to help where I can.
Well, I'd like, I think, give us all an opportunity to work in that arena. I'd like to see one of the two of you co-lead. So I'd like to, you two can flip a coin on that and see if, which one you'd like to do it and that type of thing. Then I do know, Commissioner Johnson, you led on the ExxonMobil and one of the transmission lines lately, is that correct? Everybody to experience and lead in that areas. And of course, we've got more coming up, like you said, the extension of the transfer. I think, is it the exception, extension of the, just the trans west that's going to go south here coming?
There's a new line that's going to be up and it's, it's a significant amount of money. It's, I think that's somewhere around five million.
Okay. Well, I, I'd like to give an opportunity to a commissioner to take more responsibility in leading that and that type of thing. And I don't know, Roy, are you, you feel you're in a position that you can learned enough from the last one to help with the center, general one?
You know, the last one was a very small one and it was, and it was an interesting process. I think before we, I think before I would be willing to lead a, one of the bigger ones, which I'm more than willing to when needed. I think it would be important to have at least one more under my belt with some knowledge and history. Just because we're talking a lot more money involved. And, and, and the last one, I was involved with talking to Mr. Johnson and then Eric and Attorney DeLeon. The process was a little bit different. And so I think it would be really important, especially the outcome of the process. So I, you know, I, I, if, I, I'd like to sit on one of the upcoming ones and really, and being more, instead of more of a, a witness, be an actual major player, you know, more, more of a part of the preparation with someone that's done it more often. I think then that would let me be way more prepared for the next time.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate you being honest about that. So, Commissioner Johnson, would you like to take the lead on the Jenner?
Obviously, I think it's in best interest, Sweetwater County, and I think that's the most important thing, is we consider what, what we're doing. We need to take care of Sweetwater County Forest and not train commissioners in the process. I think it takes some time to get to the point where you understand what's going on. The Exxon is not a done deal yet. We should take exception to that. I've talked to our deputy county attorney and our county attorney on that. It's still undecided what position we're going to take with that. But I think we need to take a position on that because I don't think the industrial siding handled that property. That's my opinion. And I think we need to make sure we understand that and what we're going to do with that before we get any further with the Jenner project or the other line.
No, I, I totally agree with you with what took place with ExxonMobil. And I, I, John, you're on with regard to the new statutes that came in for industrial siding. Will this general one fall under the new statutes that were adopted by the legislator this last session? I can't remember the effective date in that. Do you recall?
Yeah, so, so it should. And I, I talked to Commissioner Johnson actually this morning, just a little bit. And one of the distinctions that we'll want to discuss at some point is that I think more importantly than the changes that are statutorily made, that'll go into effect in July, which will, which will change a little bit, some of the issues that we ran into with Exxon, where they have to make specific statements as to why they would lower any amount. But with, with, with Jenner, we'll want to, they're, they'll, we'll probably want to have some discussions with Jenner before the actual application takes place.
I agree with you. So you think this application will go in before July first?
I don't know that the application will go in before July first, but I can tell you that the process will be, will begin here in the next couple of weeks.
So the, so so the project considered started prior to July first.
It will, it will almost be as if the application is already in. The, the processes that, that I think would, we would participate in, in the next couple of weeks will be similar to the processes that we took, that we engaged in after the application. So we will begin those processes early.
So Commissioner Johnson, we can pretty well keep in the back of our minds that that sighting board could act the same as they did with the ExxonMobil and without giving reason, reduce any amount. Is that correct?
I personally think they, they were wrong in what they did, the way they handled it, and I think we need to take a position on that so it doesn't happen again. I think we've got to be careful. We're talking about things in public that we should be discussing in executive session.
All right, very good. We'll leave it right there. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Johnson, if you'd be some kindness and take the lead on that. And Commissioner Shanefield, if you'll co-lead or co-lead, you and Jeff decide who will co-lead, like I said before. And let, let us know, okay?
I'd love to ride shotgun with Wally. That'd be great.
You okay with that, Lauren?
I'm okay with that. We got a lot going on with S E D C right now, too. So I'm good with that.
All right. So Wally, you got a co-lead, okay? Commissioner Johnson?
I think I have to put up with that. He's kind of difficult to work with, but we'll handle it.
All right, thank you.
All true.
With that, that concludes my report. So up next is, if there's any questions, I'll answer, but I don't believe there are. Up is Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for putting up with me. I appreciate that. It's not an easy task, ask my wife. I did want to mention first up that Commissioner Shanefield and I did take opportunity to go out to the events complex and visit with Larry Lloyd and Candy Pendleton and were, I was very grateful for them taking the time and explaining where things were and are. I didn't vote for the two hundred thousand dollar funding to them in our last meeting, mostly again because I was just not, I had more questions about how things were going. And as it turned out, they were just, they were really on the ball and kind of staying ahead of the game with how things were going financially for this season for them. And so really pleased with the answers they gave and happy with them and impressed with the work that they're doing. So kudos to them. At the airport, still down for just five flights a week and we're actually sharing those with Riverton. So flies from Denver to here to Riverton and the next day Riverton back to here to Denver. And while the finances are terrible, they're not quite as bad as anticipated. The, the losses are not in the ninety-five percent range, they're more in the eighty plus percent range. So we've, we've seen a, a request in the budget request for, you know, significantly more than last year. And obviously, that's because of the COVID pandemic and everything that's going on there and just how affected they've been by that. So I'd ask that we keep that in mind as we discuss our budget later on today and, and as we go forward. And appreciate Devin and the whole board for all their work that they're doing out there. And not an easy time for sure. It's difficult in trying to accomplish the things that they have. They've been doing really well. And Devin has scoured, along with Christina, for Christina for the, any kind of grants or in money anywhere that they can find. And they've done a good job of finding some things. So I do appreciate them. The hospital, things going well there. We, we obviously have had a couple of cases that were inpatient cases at the hospital. And my understanding and discussions, things have gone well there. And they've handled things. They've been waiting and waiting and waiting for months for that to actually happen and it did, unfortunately. And, but they handled things very well and very impressed with how things were going there also. I have had my COVID test a couple of times and it's not the, the best thing in the world, but it's also not the worst thing in the world. So we'll continue. And I say that, I guess I should explain, not that I'm symptomatic or anything, but just the business that I'm in. They've, the state as well as our county health department have asked us to be tested. Now that tests are more available here in the county and I'm working with a vulnerable population, they've asked that our staff and our residents be tested as well. So a couple of swabs have been not terrible. It makes your eyes water, but it's, it's not the worst thing in the world. And I did have a, a county resident express a concern to me about the hospital and wanted to say kudos to Irene and her team, especially Ron Cheese, for stepping up and taking care of that within a day or so. And I really do appreciate the work that they're doing and remembering that we work for the citizens of this great county of ours. And they really did. They stepped right in and took care of things. So I'm grateful for them as well. And also kudos to our county staff. It's been a rough stretch and especially here at the courthouse for being able to put things in orders to open up the courthouse again. And it's no small task. It's a, it's a lot of work, a lot of people and a lot of time and effort. So thank you to everyone who participated in that, especially Gene and Gary for leading the way on that and do appreciate them. And with that, I will turn time back over to you, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions.
Questions for Commissioner Smith, commissioners? All right, with no further questions, up, Commissioner Shanefield.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to say congratulations to all of our graduates. This has been a tough end to their high school careers and college careers. And I, I think that our schools, our administrators and our community has done a really great job in stepping up and leading the way and showing our appreciation. Congratulations to all of them. So the museum is meeting, meeting over Zoom. And they have continued to remain close to the public, but they will reopen. They're going to reevaluate next month at their board meeting and see how things are going. They are staying busy. And the storage that was being cleaned out, it's kind of been detoured a little bit with all of the COVID crisis and all of the work that Gene's group has been doing outside. And then, so they're hoping to be able to move in to that storage and get their storage moved in sometime during the summertime. They're being very patient and they're working on a lot of the cataloging that they've had that's been backlogged for a long time. Golden Hour Senior Center is continuing to be very busy with their home delivered meals as well as their hot drive up pickups. And then they also are still serving the frozen meals. They are also still close to the public and are, are just evaluating with their high risk population when, you know, the proper time would be to open up. I wanted to give a shout out to Christina in our grants management. She has worked in partnership with so many of our entities throughout the county in the past couple of weeks, searching for grants. I mean, everything from the airport to the events complex, S E D C. Really been very involved and has, has, I think, gone out on, on a limb for all of the different entities just trying to rally up some additional funding to keep everybody going. I have been really busy with our state broadband council as I talked a little bit about in our last meeting. The legislation or the management committee was working on a state broadband task force on top of the broadband council to really try to get some funding moving to better connect our communities throughout the state. We have that upcoming special session. We're really going to be looking at that from the broadband standpoint. And I'm also been watching and waiting and listening and lending my opinion to our state legislators around where those funds are going to go and what's going to come back to the cities and counties and towns across our state so that we can provide some assistance to the small businesses and the communities that we support. I, as Jeff mentioned, I met with the events complex about the budget concerns that I had. They did a great job and were able to answer all of my questions. So I really Um, they did a great job and were able to answer um all of my questions. Um so I really appreciated them. Right after the meeting, we had an email saying, hey, when do you want to come meet? Um, and so that I, that was great for them being proactive. I really appreciated their time. Um, and then, let's see what else I missed. I I also wanted to just give a great shout out to all of our um county employees. I know coming back to work and trying to get everything rolling again after being shut down for so long, it's kind of tough. And especially with the overflow of people coming into the courthouse over the past couple of days and um every time I been over or talked to anybody even on the phone, everybody's been um out of their way to ensure that everybody's being taken care of and to take care of the public during this time um and do it safely. So with that, that is all that I have to add.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, Mr. Shane Field? Comments? Thank you, Commissioner Shane Field. Can only echo your comments about the employees and individuals that have stepped up and uh helped make uh this transition in the courthouse for Sweetwater County so positive and and in some cases um easy. So thank you very much. Uh with that, uh Commissioners, our first-gen item is at nine thirty-five. We're about fifteen minutes ahead. Um, what's your thoughts about a ten-minute break coming back at nine thirty? Get started. Okay, Tim, we'll take a ten-minute break and we'll come back at nine thirty and get going. Thank you. Okay, uh we'll call this uh meeting back to order and going back to our agenda. Our first agenda item is uh Tab D and that is a resolution to establish a courthouse as an absentee polling polling location and counting center. And uh joining us is our uh county clerk, Ms. Lane. Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Good morning, Chairman Winley. Can you hear me? I have a, I have an air conditioner or something going in here. I can't get to shut off.
Can you hear you loud and clear? Tim gave the come up sign, so we're good.
Okay, thank you. Um, um first, I'd like to let you know that we, I did have to change the resolution number because um Bonnie and I didn't communicate very well. So anyway, it's actually Resolution Number twenty dash zero five dash C L dash zero zero four.
I'm writing. We will take care of that in the motion.
Okay, um with the recent issues with COVID nineteen and concerns about elections and and gatherings, um I have decided to open the, with your permission, the courthouse as an early absentee polling place um with the Enrolled Act Number forty-five that has to be um established by the county commissioners. And it would allow me to open the courthouse for, if you decided you wanted to absentee vote, you could come in during the days and times that are set, which will be um figured out as we go along. Um, and you could come in absentee vote and actually put your own ballot into the uh ballot machine. So you're not mailing it in. You don't have to just drop it off. You can actually come in and um vote with the DS two hundred or our voting machines. So that is what I'm requesting. Um, we will possibly with the extra absentee ballots that will be coming in. Um, the count center is where we can um open the machines that are locked for results, but that we can start feeding the absentee ballots into it a little earlier. That's not the directive as of yet. Uh, we just want to be set up and ready to go if that comes down at a later time.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Lane, um questions, Commissioners regarding the um for Ms. Lane? Any questions? Would we be, I've got a question. We would become, this would be for both the general and the uh primary election?
Yes, if we so choose. Right now I'm focusing on the primary. It depends on what's going on um in the state um with the general election, but once this is established, it's established. Um until we decide not to have that, I can just add it to the polling locations um for the next election. I want, I did want to know, you didn't know that we do have to open it up for public comments. Um, it was advertised in the newspaper for the last two weeks that I would be bringing this up at this commission meeting and therefore we do need to allow public comment.
All right, so we'll have a public hearing if if uh when the Commissioners are done with any questions, okay? Uh, Commissioners, any more questions for Ms. Lane before we open up this resolution for public hearing? Okay, with no further questions, at this point, we will open up Resolution Number two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero zero four for a public hearing and this resolution is adopting Enroll Act Number forty-five and establishing Sweetwater County Courthouse as a location for absentee voting. Is that correct?
And count center.
And count center. Thank you. Um, we are now open for public hearing. We're open for a public hearing. One more time, any public comment for this resolution? We'll close public hearing now. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution two zero dash zero five dash C L dash zero zero four?
Mr. Chairman, a move that we approve it as presented?
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh.
Thank you. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else? Thank you.
None, none on that one.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lane. Moving on to Tab E is a discussion of election directives from the Secretary of State's office. I believe that's Secretary of State Buchanan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Ms. Lane, you're up again.
Okay, um, as I believe you are aware, um and at the governor's last address, um Secretary Buchanan did speak about elections and and directives that he has put out in regard to uh making elections as safe for the community and staff as possible during the COVID nineteen. Um, we have been um directed to have masks and gloves and hand sanitizer and as much um and our judges have to be six feet apart um at our polling locations as well as the public. Um, so we've, we've had a lot of directives regarding COVID nineteen. Um Directive twenty twenty dash zero one was mainly in um regards to the Maytown elections. It only affected the clerk's office as in what would happen if it was moved and there were concerns um from the public and what our responsibility was at my office. So it didn't affect um the primary or the general. Uh Directive twenty twenty dash zero two that was also, it was out on May first, twenty twenty. Um and it went out, let me, let me find a, hold on, let me get my glasses on. I'm sorry, I gotta wear glasses these days. Um, to ensure compliance with the CDC recomi- mend- Um, to ensure compliance with the CDC recommendations and to protect all Wyoming voters from exposure to the novel novel coronavirus, I direct you to apply the provisions regarding when satellite absentee polling places may open. That is the one that we just passed the resolution to make the courthouse an absentee polling place. Generally with the statute twenty-two nine dash one twenty-five A I I, you must have an absentee polling place open the same hours as the courthouse. So forty-five days prior to the election day from eight to five at your county courthouse. This allows the clerk to change the hours of operation if they so choose and limit the number of days that it is open. It does not have to be open forty-five days. We are looking into those dates and what that will look like for our county. So that was the second directive that allowed us to, to move some of those typical, or I guess not typical, but the, the state statute. And then the third one is twenty twenty dash zero three is in regards to polling places. I know Secretary Buchanan talked a little bit about polling places in his address. However, in section, I know I sent this to you. To ensure compliance with CDC recommendations and to protect all Wyoming voters and election officials from exposure to the novel coronavirus, I direct you to apply Wyoming Statute twenty-two dash twelve dash one oh one B to consolidate the number of polling places in your county. One, but not more than seven at the sole discretion of the county clerk. Any exceptions must be requested in writing and approved by the Secretary of State's office. That is going to be one that the clerk's office is working diligently on how to provide those types of services here in Sweetwater County. To ensure, the second is to ensure compliance with the CDC recommendations. I direct you to apply Wyoming Statute twenty-two dash twelve dash one oh one B to designate consolidated polling places only in buildings with sufficient floor space to accommodate social distancing protocols. Three is to, to ensure the compliance. I direct you to apply Chapter Five, Section Five B I I of my office's election procedures rules to ensure that at least four judges are appointed to each polling place so that curbside voting will be available to all voters with special needs. That is a change from the recommended three to now I, my office will hire or appoint four judges so that we can offer a judge to go out with a private sleeve that goes over the ballot so that those with special needs can vote. And then their ballot is, remains in the privacy screen folder and it will then be put into the, the machine. And the last one is for, I direct you to provide all election judges with a face mask and sterile gloves and require them to wear them at all times and to frequently sanitize all public surfaces and voting equipment in accordance with CDC recommendations and electoral, election systems and software, which is at where our machines were purchased, their specifications. So I just wanted to, to talk about these in a meeting so that people are aware that these are directives that my office will be working to follow and make sure that we follow the directives of the Secretary of State's office. Questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Questions for Clerk Lane?
I have a question. Is, you're in the process of figuring out the consolidation of these precincts, et cetera, and voting places. Is that being done now or has it been done?
Um, we have been working on it in order to make sure that the places we have, have adequate space. Once we have everything, I haven't visited all the sites yet. I, I plan on visiting them so I can see for myself what the floor plans look like. But yes, I have been speaking with some of the larger facilities and that way we can make sure there's adequate space there. And if there's not, then we have to begin looking for larger facilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
And just to make sure Cindy that I'm recalling, we're going from something like twenty-three to seven. Is that correct?
Twenty-two, yes, twenty-two to seven.
Okay. How are you feeling about that?
I, I, well, I don't feel great, but I will do what needs to be done. And I believe that's shortly, the Secretary of State's office will be sending out mailers flyers for, that include a an absentee ballot form, which I will say here for the record, does not require a notarized statement or notarization. I'm not quite sure how that came about, but that's never been a requirement. It's actually state law that you don't require it. So they will be sending out to encourage people to vote by absentee ballot. And then that is why I requested the courthouse become an absentee polling place so that those who are concerned about that can actually, will be able to come in and cast their vote in person and watch the ballot go in the machine. So we are working on it. It's not going to be easy and there's going, I know there'll be unhappy voters and I totally understand that. We are, are used to one way. As of now, it's for the primary. I, I don't have any directives for the general. I will however, make sure that if this continues, that the places we pick can hold the number of voters we expect at the general so that we do not have to keep changing polling places or buildings. That is, that is the tough part because the primaries generally a lower turnout than the general, which we are hoping to change this year with absentee voting actually, that people are aware of that. We may not be able to come into town and, and don't think about that. But we will do our best to make sure if it were to continue, everyone stays at the same place for at least this election cycle.
Sounds like, sounds like you're on it and you're doing a good job. And so thank you. It's a monumental task and I'm sure communication, as you're aware, will be key of getting those polling places out and hey, you can do absentee and this is how and all that advertising. So best of luck. Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Chairman, Chairman Winling, can I have a comment?
Go, go ahead, Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I do, thank you for following these directives. Cindy, I, I think, and I think they're kind of difficult to follow. And I guess kind of knowing the exposure risk and everything we discussed, it almost seems, and maybe to me, and maybe I'm just a simple guy that don't get it, but it almost seems like consolidating the numbers, you know, kind of contrary to what we would want to do in this situation. And so, you know, we'll follow the, the, we'll follow Mr. Buchanan's recommendations, but I find them to be odd and almost counter indicative to everything else we're looking at doing in this situation. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, Commissioner Lloyd, and your comments are well noted because I could visualize how far those six foot markings are going to be down the street. So anyhow, yeah, I agree. Any other questions for our Clerk, Ms. Lane?
Just a comment, Cindy, I'm sure you're aware of this, but the, your application to run for office requires the district and precinct, et cetera, on that forum. And if those people that are going to run aren't going to be able to fill that out. So, and that's due by twenty-ninth is what you told me yesterday. So that, that's gonna be a little bit of a problem right there.
I'm an, Commissioner Johnson, I appreciate that comment. We are working. It's, it's going to be done by the end of this week. We will have that out there. I am believing that you would remain your same precinct. I mean, I know you remain your same precinct. The polling location is just where you're gonna vote. So your, your district and your precinct will remain the same because this directive just kind of overrides this for this little bit of time. So you would use your same district and precinct.
Good answer.
Very good answer. Very good. So any other questions for Ms. Lane? All right, without any further questions, that's, I appreciate the information. It was good to share it here during this meeting and of course, I just remind the public that these directives come from the Secretary Buchanan's office out of Cheyenne. So we're doing our best to accommodate those directives through our, our clerk's office and we hope all goes well. Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Thank you.
All right, there's no further questions regarding that. We'll move on to Tab F, which is again, it'll be Mr. McLean and Ms. Lane regarding accounting manager salary recommendation. And that, so I will turn the floor over to Mr. McLean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Try to provide some background, get us up to speed to frame our discussion. As you recall, back in November, we looked, took a look at some of the salaries of some of the department heads and then technical managers at, at that time using the Employers Council survey data. And, and so there were some areas where there were some concerns about how well they matched the job description, so on and so forth. This is, this is one of those areas. It's important to note, this position in particular is a, is a very difficult position in that when it was created, I think Commissioner Johnson was on board the first time. Will probably recall this. We had a couple difficult starts in the creating this type of position. We're trying to balance between the various roles of the elected official. The county clerk is the chief budget officer and essentially the accounts payable function for the county and the county treasurer, who functions as kind of the accounts receivable and receives all the money for the county and other functions. The county commissioners as the ultimate authority with respect to the budget. So back in two thousand and eleven, there was a lot of concern expressed by the elected officials when the board decided to create this position. And it took quite some crafting to try to carefully word the job duties and responsibilities so as not to infringe on those areas where there's statutory responsibility of elected officials. So I think it's a good summary as, and as the basis of this discussion. I'm just gonna read the original letter that I sent to the county commissioners to Dale Davis, who was the clerk at the time, Rob Slaughter, Christina and Marty regarding this position. In, in essence, it says, "To avoid the pitfalls of past attempts to fill this position, it is vital that all parties agree to the essential duties of this position. As such, I would appreciate feedback from those of you who work closest to the finances of the county. If there's anyone else we believe should be added, please include them. The attached job description is fairly exhaustive, thus allowing all of you to consider whether certain responsibilities should or should not be part of the duties of this position. So please feel free to recommend deletion or addition of specific elements along with your rationale." And then the, the job description goes on and I'll, you know, there's lots of detail, but I'm just gonna cover the major areas. The major areas of responsibility are budget, audit, internal financial management slash fiscal procedures, fiscal reports and analysis and training and education. So as a result of that, the position was advertised, the position announcement provides a pretty good summary of what the primary objectives of the position are, which are as follows. To prepare and administer the county budget during the operating year, including budget hearings, preparing budget amendments and reviewing revenue and expenditures. Something we're gonna do this afternoon, I think. Advises the Board of County Commissioners, elected officials and department managers in relation to budget matters and accounting procedures to comply with accounting standards. Prepares regular and special budget reports. Ensures compliance with local, state and federal budgetary and reporting requirements. Directs financial audits and provides recommendations for procedural improvements. Prepares trial balance of schedules and reports necessary to facilitate the county's annual audit. Reviews, coordinates and provides assistance in the development of annual reports and audits. Serves as primary point of contact with audit officials. Prepares or directs preparation of financial statement, business activity reports, financial position forecasts, annual budgets or reports used by regulatory agencies. So the situation at this time was that the county had been spending a lot of money for the annual audit. And the auditor had approached the county commission regarding how much work they were having to do to prepare the audit, basically doing it for us. And that they were too ameth- meshed in the audit work and were uncomfortable with that role. So Robert Dayhill with McGee, Hearn and Bison, later Amber Fiss, helped us kind of develop what specific things this position needed to do to help address the problems with the audit. And then we also added in the issues with respect to the budget because the budget's the place where we account for the monies that we're gonna spend for the year. So, so the wording of the, both the position description, the job descriptions was very careful to avoid the statute, to avoid conflict, which was a concern the elected officials brought forth at that time with their statutory duties in their respective areas. So you'll see a lot of, lot of terms such as reviews, coordinates, advises, recommends, so on and so forth because that's the best that we can do in, in this role. So based on that, when, when we looked at the original benchmark survey from the Employers Council, the position that was chosen out of all the financial positions was a position called an audit supervisor manager. There's lots of financial positions in there. Most, if not all of these positions are administrative supervisor positions that supervise departments. If we were in the private sector, you might have a CFO that supervises the accounts payable, accounts receivable, investments and other things. But as you know, we have statutory segregation of duties within the county that requires those duties to be in the offices of various elected officials, the board, the treasurer, the clerk and so on. So the position that was chosen at that time was a position that was described as coordinating and administers the internal audit function to appraise the soundness, adequacy and application of accounting, financial and operating controls. Provides guidance to internal audit staff in the preparation of audit reports and recommendations to improve and promote effective internal controls, provides counsel and advice to management personnel regarding the implications of audit findings and recommendations and appropriate corrective measures. Typically reports to the top financial executive typically requiring CPA or equivalent. So based, based on that in, in, in November, and then again, we discussed it somewhat in, in in January, I presented the board with the data from the Employers Council report that had the seventy-fifth percentile around one hundred and fifteen thousand three seventy-one, which is fairly similar to the accounting manager position that was here, that we currently have. And in addition to that, I included the, the salary data from two of the local entities that have fairly, you know, somewhat similar positions, although they don't have elected officials. So what, I included data from the city of Rock Springs and the city of Green River. For the city of Rock Springs, I was the Director of Administrative Services that had a range of one hundred and one, three forty-eight to one twenty-six, five seventy. Again, as you know, that position has considerable supervisory responsibility and currently also some HR roles within the city of Rock Springs. And the city of Green River, the Director of Finance slash City Clerk, that position is from ninety thousand eight seventy-five to one twenty-two, six eighty-one. And, and that was what was included in the original stuff that we talked about. Based, based on that data, on the seventy-fifth percentile, I recommended no change at that time. Since then, Cindy and I and Bonnie and John and others have met on this issue and I think the things that we can agree on are the primary roles of the responsibility are to manage the audit process and to prepare the budget. Those are the two primary, not the only, but the two primary responsibilities. I think those were reflected in the original job description as priorities and were also reflected in our, in our current discussions. The, the conflict I think comes in, in looking at, as I think is pointed out in the packet that was submitted, in looking at positions that are comparable. Obviously, that's difficult to do because our structure is not the same as every private structure out there because of the elected officials. And so you see a considerable amount of data presented in areas for chief financial officers and those types of positions. We were very careful to avoid that title and we were also very careful to avoid the, the reality that this position has no direct authority to set policy, has no direct authority to manage any people, fact doesn't manage any people, and is more of a recommendation, support resource to the county clerk, treasurer and others with respect to technical audit and, and financial issues. And so that's basically how we got here. I think our goal today is to try to finalize those salary recommendations and get those finalized so that, so that we can move forward. And, and go from there. Like I said, Cindy probably has some perspective, I think, and, but that's the history, how we got here. From my perspective, I don't see the, I don't see substantial changes in the job, to be honest. I don't see areas where they could change based on the structure of the county. At the end of the day, the budgets, the budget submittals are going to be the responsibility of the board and the county clerk. The county treasurer will have those responsibilities and I, I don't think there's any way that those could be subjected to some sort of chief financial officer role. But be that as it may, our goal today is to try to get that set and resolved so everybody can move forward.
Thank you, Gary. Cindy, do you have anything to add?
I do. Thank you, Chairman Winley. We've been working on this since we were, you know, asked to do so and looking at all the information provided. And I'm not quite a numbers person, but I worked with Ms. Berry to make sure that we had everything correct and to look at all the different agencies around to get local comps. I don't have one of the papers here I wanted. We were looking at the city of Rock Springs with the, their financial personnel as well. We're all, you know, with the government, yeah, we have elected officials here and we have to be careful not to call or say people direct or do things like that under the elected official who's the, the chief officer of all those different positions. However, when you look at what Bonnie does, it's, it's more than just the budget. It's more than just the audit. She may not manage county people, but she manages component units and collecting their financial data. She manages our outside agencies, making sure all their financial data is also completed and our budget's quite large when you add everything in there. We did get paperwork today on the Mountain State's finance, their financial information that we had been asking for. We did get that today. That shows pages of public city, county, state wages that actually the one that we, when we looked at the 75% with all the other financial data we had, we, we looked at, which is actually lower than what their, what Mountain State says for some of their public governments' positions pay. That is where we're at. But if you look at also our, just our own county point system and pay scales, we, we work together and we, the points came out to a, a level 38 when you add up everything that Bonnie does and has that that requires on this county point system. And then her years of service is right where, what the recommendation from my office for her scale is. And we didn't try to go above or below. It's, it's, it's on the scale. So we did take a look at everything to make sure we were in the correct, the correct realm. If you're talking a CFO, you're looking at over 200,000 and, and that's not what we're trying to do. The hardest part about all of this is a title. To say that someone is a director of finance, in my opinion, does not mean she tells me what to do and directs me. It means I'm the county clerk. I'm responsible to make sure all this is done. We hired an accounts manager, whatever the title is, to make sure it is done correctly and we have passed our audits. And that tells me that our job is being done. I worked with the auditors and, and they speak very highly of this position that we have created to keep segregation of duties. And that is where my, my thoughts are coming from and what we are requesting.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
First of all, Gary, you did an excellent job of telling the history of what, where this came from. And I was involved with this from day one. Every year we would get the audit report from Mr. Dayhill and Ms. Nurse. And there was always, always an exception to the audit. And their recommendation was to create a position, as you described, in order to meet that requirement so we would get rid of those exceptions. That's what the commission did. That was driven by the commission, not by the clerk. Because we were the ones who were held responsible for those exceptions. And Mr. Davis was, he was very well aware of what the problem was reoccurring and it did over a period of years. And that's why we drove, we, the commission drove the, the need for that position to be, be created in order to get rid of the exceptions to the audit. We then hired Bonnie and she's done an excellent job in that regard. Because those exceptions aren't occurring anymore. But the intent of the commission was not to expand that job. But it was to meet the requirements of that job as described. And I think that there is, there is no need, in my opinion, for us to expand that. It's, if it's been expanded, it's not because of the, the intent of the commission at that point in time. The only intent was to get rid of the exceptions. So we met the requirements of the audit which occurred. And if there's been any increase in the responsibility of that job, it was not driven by the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments or either questions for Mr. McLean or Ms. Lane?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I have a few questions and this leads me back to the beginning of the salary study in that this is almost $40,000 difference in where the original amount of change was approved in November and what we're looking at right now. And my concern is that I, I think all of our positions, because we've consolidated so many different areas under the county to save money. We have great people who work for us and they do a great job. We have them expand and supervise and, and take over places where it's not typical. So my concern is overwhelmingly that our job titles may not necessarily fit, probably don't necessarily fit the job titles of the ones given to Mountain State. I truly believe that this potentially needs to be redone for all of our positions. I know I was looking at the percentages and everything and, and the other ones are either close to the 75th percentile that are listed in this document that Mr. McLean gave us, the Public Works, Land Use, IT and HR. They are within, close to the 75th percentile. But, and we've had a lot of other conversations around jobs and job descriptions not necessarily encompassing that. And I would really like to iron out the fact that this is an overarching thing and we're dealing with one specific position now, but this is going to be an ongoing conversation. And I would really like to get this taken care of.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. Any other comments by the other commissioners?
Commissioner, Chairman Winley?
Mr. McLean?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. McLean. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I must have leaned on the, on the spacebar. One thing I, I just left out in terms of this also. At the time that we addressed this particular position, there was a discussion with the auditors regarding the, you know, some places that had been wrestling with the same types of issues. This was not just Germaine to Sweetwater County, Teton County, and Campbell County and some others were wrestling with, with this issue. At the time that we developed this position, in terms of trying to set some of the, the original salaries, we gathered data from Campbell County, city of Green River, city of Rock Springs, state of Wyoming, couple different positions in the state of Wyoming as the auditors and others suggested. More recently, with, with the Condrey survey, when we sent this position out and while is, is, as as Clark Lane alluded to, certainly titles play a role, but there are summary job descriptions for all the positions that go out. It isn't just the titles to go out for those. But within the Condrey results, the major, major duties that were sent out for this position, which, which they prepared based on the job descriptions and data that were sent were that they, for this position, were that the position prepares and administers the county budget, including coordinating budget hearings, preparing budget amendments and reviewing revenue and expenditures. Advises board accounting commissioners, elect officials, department managers in relation to budget matters. Prepares regular and special budget reports, ensures compliance with local, state, federal budgetary reporting requirements, analyzes monthly departmental budgeting and accounting reports. Directs financial audits and provides recommendations for procedural improvements. Prepares trial balances, develops internal auditing procedures to ensure effectiveness and internal compliance with financial policies. Oversees the processing of accounts payable, payroll, accounts receivable, grant projects, journal transactions, prepares and directs financial, preparation of financial statements, business activity reports, so on and so forth. And so based on that, we received data back from the state of Wyoming, Laramie County, Fremont County, Campbell County, Mesa County, Vannock County, Idaho, city of Rock Springs, city of Green River, city of Cheyenne. So again, based on that, the, the 75th percentile for the position is at a minimum annual rate of 69,352, the maximum annual rate of 96,465. And, and the current position's at 114,823. So obviously it's, 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 it's difficult, but the, the reality is we carved out a position very carefully to avoid the statutory requirements of each of the elected officials. This was done in cooperation with each of the elected officials as well as the grants manager and, and purchasing and other folks who work with that area so as not to get outside of our bounds. And so I just wanted to clarify that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Any other questions for Mr. McLean or, or Clark Lane regarding the job description? Or the material that's been presented?
I do have a couple of questions, Chairman Winley, if that's okay?
Commissioner Lloyd, you have the floor.
Hey, I keep looking to the right to see if I could ask you more face to face, but I keep looking out the window as I do that since I'm in front of a computer screen. But I guess Ms. Lane, you just said you would receive some information even as late as this morning from the HR department regarding some of the, the schedules. How long has that been requested? How, how long's some of that been outstanding?
I have to unmute myself. I'm worried about this thing over here making all this noise. We've been requesting that, Ms. Berry has been requesting that. I, I, we might want to ask her because I know the exact amount, but, but for several weeks. And we just got that today and it was really interesting information. I didn't have time to get a copy to look at that. But it is the Public Works, the government, and I would have liked to have been able to see that, that report from Mountain States as well before coming in, but we were already on the agenda. So, so I was just looking, you know, we're just trying to look. We were asked to to relook at everything. So that's all we did. We're just relooking at everything using the, the job description and the, the items that Ms. Berry is required to do. And that's, so that's where, why we began looking at numbers. And we do have that Mountain State's report now as well. I think you're muted.
I was. Thank you. I didn't realize I was. I like to talk to myself sometimes. All right. But I guess my other question would be, it seems like really in the discrepancy in this is of the job descriptions, you know. It seems like Mr. McLean believes that if it's under one job description and Ms. Berry believes it fits under the, the, well, Gary, what I think was the positions, the accounting manager, then I think Ms., in her document, Ms. Berry sends out that it's more in the, as a, was a financial director or whatever that position is. I guess, why is there, you know, I guess have, do we sit and have we sit and looked at the exact duties that Ms. Berry performs and say, kind of checkmarked it off through both types of job descriptions to see which one is most fitted or does it fit into another? Because I know I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. McLean about three weeks ago approximately to discuss the system and really where it seems to be hitting is, and with the ones we're having discrepancy with, is in the, the agreement of what the exact job title is, is we're trying to match things around. So I guess which one of these does it truly fit and how, what would be the best method to determine which these job, which are the most accurate job descriptions to reflect to titles? I guess, how would we do that? And, and why is there such a discrepancy between parties and why we believe there's different positions?
Commissioner Lloyd, so I think, I think that the position that we had created was, is very detailed as I alluded to and, and I think articulated when we started this. Because we went through the, the exact things that we could ask this position to do that didn't usurp the authority of the clerk or the treasurer or the board accounting commissioners or, or what have you. And so I, I think that that part is pretty accurate. I think everybody agrees that the two main responsibilities of the position are the budget and the, the audit. So I don't think there's, there's a huge discrepancy there. Where the discrepancy or the, the challenge gets to be is when you start moving into the market and more specifically when you start looking at the public financial market versus the private financial market. And so as you know, if you go to Genesis Alkali and you look at the chief financial officer of Genesis Alkali, they will, that's a, a, a financial position that supervises all of the financial operations of that department. Has a number of employees who report to that position, so on and so forth. In the packet that was provided to you, you'll see local data that reflects positions again that are in the, in the areas where you have a chief financial officer that's running a department, has considerable supervisory experience, but also has virtually unlimited authority to make policies with respect to financial operations of the department. This position does not have that. We were very careful to avoid that because those responsibilities reside, I think unequivocally with the board accounting commissioners, with the county clerk and with the county treasurer. So I think the difficulty comes in, in which data you're going to use for the market comparison. I don't think that the job duties, I think we're pretty I think we're pretty close agreement with respect to the job duties. I think the issues with respect to the external comparative data, again, I think the overall biggest discrepancy is the fact that this position has no supervisory responsibilities and does not have the ability to set policy. It's an advisory recommendation to various people that have authority and ultimately are responsible. I think it's important when you evaluate a position in terms of compensation, almost universally, one of the most difficult areas of responsibility is supervision of subordinate staff and responsibility for the acts of other people. There is no supervision requirement in this job. There's no hiring, no firing, and there's technical supervision, as we all have within the county or technical advisories. I think that's primarily the area where there's discrepancy. I hope that answers your question at least in part.
You okay with that, Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, just marinating.
Chairman Wenling, may I answer that question as well, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, so I understand what Mr. McLean is saying about the market, and we are government, we're not out there competing with the private sector. The information that I looked at was from county and city and state government positions. But I keep coming back to our own point system here in the county, where we, you know, give points for different job positions. And when we went through and added up responsibilities that Ms. Berry has, she came out with a total points of 1101, which puts it at a grade 38. And then, if you look at her steps for longevity, it's step four, and when you come over, it is super tiny, tiny, so I have to look. Then that puts her at a 38.4 with her years of service, puts it at the 153.871.37. So, we use our own county system. I didn't take into account all of the, I mean, we did look at the private sector when we were trying to find out with comps, but we understand we're at the 75%. We understand that we're county government and that we are not to, that we do not use the private sector as that is not something the government should be competing with. So, that's just, we did look at that, and like I said, this is a discussion, trying to make sure, but we just kind of went into the county, our own county and our own point system, to try to, you know, even compare where we're at to those other agencies around us. So, that's why, that's the information that we put in there for this discussion, that we could do what was asked, which was come up with how it all, what it's all based on for salaries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
And let's just follow up one. I cannot believe what we're doing here today. This is unprecedented, what we're doing. We're negotiating, we're discussing a salary of one of the employees of the county. And we have a system that's, we have assigned a responsibility for with the human resource function. So, what we're doing is establishing, possibly establishing a precedent, where if somebody's unhappy with their salary, they can come and negotiate with the county commission. I think that's entirely wrong. It's never happened in the past, and it shouldn't be happening in the future. If we've got a problem, if we, the commission, have a problem with a salary, we should have discussions with the human resource director and iron that out. But to put our employees in the middle of that, I think is unprecedented. I don't think we should be doing that. If we were back when we created that position and we established it, if that position were eliminated today, the responsibility would be back with the county clerk to do that with other personnel, because this was a new position that was created. But there were other people within the clerk's function that was doing, that were doing that function. So, I think there's two things we're doing here that are entirely wrong. And I don't think we should be looking at, if someone has a problem with their salary, they shouldn't be dealing with the county commission at this point in time. They should be dealing with the responsible head, and that responsible head, in this case, is the clerk. The clerk should be discussing that in private with the human resource function, which would then take it possibly to executive session because it's a personnel issue, and I think we're wrong in what we're doing here.
Commissioner Johnson, it was, just to share with you, it was a request by the clerk's office, I believe, to bring this at this point in time. I'm with you, I agree it should be. Felt no reason to them to, talking with our county attorney, listen to process, listening to documentation. But my next comment was that, thank you for the information from everybody. We know we have other areas that we have to address as commissioners and make decisions on with assistance of HR. So, and those things need to take place in executive session. And where I'm at is I'm to the point where I'm ready to, I would certainly like to say thank you to our clerk and thank you to our HR person. And the remainder part of this decision needs to happen in executive session with our HR person and not only dealing with the chief, with our accounting officer, but also with some other positions that we know that have been waiting for and requesting some audience with us as commissioners. But I agree with you, at this point, needs to go into executive session, but at the bequest of the clerk, as well as what she represents. That's why this was presented in public, and we won't make a salary from there. Thank you. So, any other comments, commissioners? I would thank you, Ms. Lane, and thank you, Mr. McLean, for the presentation. And we will take up any further consideration regarding the salaries, not only for this position but others, when it comes to our amount on call within executive session. Thank you very much. With that, commissioners, I know we have scheduled Tab G, H, and I with, I believe, with Mr. Legursky. But I do know we have two callers on the line for Tab J and K that I'd like to move to first and then come back to Mr. Legursky for those three items. I see the first tab is up with Tab J, and that's a request for approval of the University of Utah Extension Emergency Department Service. And I also know that Andrew Browning is on also for the Western States. So, Andrew will get to you as soon as we finish with Ms. Campbell. And if you're out there, Ms. Campbell, the floor is yours. Ms. Campbell?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great, thank you, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Just a little bit of background, as you know, we contract with the University of Utah for our emergency department physicians. And that has been a contract that's been in place since 2014. And it was set to expire this June. And we actually sent out letters of interest, starting in December, to different ED providers, companies, to try to get some interest along with the U of U. And then, the COVID thing happened, and our system at the hospital has been really disrupted. And we aren't sure of our numbers anymore. We're not sure of what our ED numbers are going to look like. And so, we reached out to the U of U to see if we could get an extension just for a year until we can get better numbers and better idea of what is out there for us for options for ED physicians. And it could be that we do go back to the U of U, but it will be a different contract. And so, we just needed an extension of time before we enter into a new contract with any emergency department provider. And the fee that's in here is similar, it's pretty darn close to what we're paying now for the ED. So, nothing's really changed. It's just an extension of the current amendment to the contract for our emergency department physicians until June of 2021.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Commissioners, again, you've heard the request to extend this contract. By statute, any contracts, I believe, with the hospital, since it's a county hospital, a part of the statute and expectations is that the board of county commissioners come involved and approve that, I believe. So, with that, commissioners, any questions for Ms. Campbell?
Mr. Chairman, I'd defer to Ms. Campbell and Mr. Smith. I think he's the one that's on top of that. I think their request is a very reasonable request. They know much more about it than we do, except possibly Mr. Smith, he knows everything.
Okay, Mr. Smith, you're on the carpet.
It's quite the intro and a lot of confidence there. No, it all looks good from my understanding and an extension, an amendment to an agreement that's been in place for quite a number of years. So, all looks well there, Commissioner Johnson.
With that being said, if John's out there, John, I noticed on the document, there's previous signatures on it. Do we need to sign anything on that document?
Mr. Chairman, I did send Sally Shoemaker this morning a clean copy with a place for the commissioners to sign, so that you can just execute that one, then I'll get it back to our board chair, and he can sign it after that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, if there's no questions, and Commissioner Smith is totally okay with it, I would entertain a motion to that we amended the contract and extend it. Ms. Campbell, do you have a comment?
No, I would really appreciate this. We can get this back to the U of U for their signature as well. So, thank you for your thoughts on that.
Okay, and along with the motion, whoever makes it, maybe Commissioner Smith, authorize Chairman to sign?
I would move that we approve the agreement for physician professional services with the University of Utah. The submitted contract is presented and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioners, we have a motion, is there a second?
Let's take that motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both saying aye, motion carries, thank you. We'll get that right.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work over the past.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Tab K, Western States and Tribal Natural Gas Initiative. And presenting to that, that to us today is Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, if you're out there?
I am.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, how are you doing?
Wonderful, yourself?
Good, thanks for having me. I had intended on addressing you all in person, I guess, in early April, but obviously, you know, events precluded that. But here we are, I appreciate the chance to come talk to you all.
Thank you for taking the time. The floor is yours. And just so you know, the five commissioners, I don't know if you have your screen on and you can see us, but Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Roy Lloyd, Commissioner Jeff Smith, and Commissioner Lauren Shanefield, as well as myself. So, welcome, Andrew, good to see you. Go ahead, floor is yours.
All right, thanks so much. Well, I will kind of forego my presentation. It's probably a little bit too lengthy. And but I did send you all some documents. I sent them to Sally Shoemaker yesterday. It was, you know, kind of my stock presentation, PowerPoint, as well as the MOU that is signed by our members. And I'll just start with a little bit of background on Western States and tribal nations. We were formed out of an agreement between states of Colorado under the John Hickenlooper administration and Governor Herbert of Utah's Office of Energy Development to look at the common challenges of stranded natural gas in both states and accessing markets via west coast energy exports. An issue I know, I'm sure you all have talked about before, it is probably one of the pivotal energy challenges for the interior states is how to get their products to market with an intrangent west coast. So, you know, I've been working kind of the nexus of energy politics and policy for quite some time. And this is actually a new collaborative effort that is led by the states and the county governments of the west. We have in our membership the state of Wyoming as represented by the Wyoming Pipeline Authority and soon, the Wyoming Energy Authority, as that merger continues to happen. The state of Utah is represented by the Utah Governor's Office of Energy Development. The state of New Mexico, which makes us bipartisan with the Lujan Grisham administration as a part of this effort. And then, the Western Colorado counties of Garfield, Mesa, Moffett, and Rio Blanco. When the police administration came in power, they decided that they did not want to focus on natural gas and wanted their policy focus to be solely on renewable energy. And so, they withdrew from the MOU. And I guess that kind of underscores, you know, the challenges of our organization, what we are designed to address. We also have the Ute Indian Tribe as a member and are talking with a number of other tribes, including the MHA Tribe, the Crow Tribe, and the Navo Tribe, and the Southern Ute Tribe, which are an important part of the dialogue on energy development and exports. So, we're looking specifically on two different projects, three. If you look at Canadian exports, but I'll kind of put that on a third tier. One immediately is on Jordan Cove. As you all may know, Jordan Cove is the only LNG project going through a permitting process on the North American West Coast. We have jumped in with full partnership with Pembina, which is the owner of Jordan Cove, on their permitting process. As we started forming late, early last summer, they were right in the middle of their draft EIS for the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So, we took a number of delegations to those FERC hearings, the public hearings, that included county commissioners from Wyoming, from Utah, from Colorado, labor groups. We did drum in letters from tribal groups. I think we got about 123 letters into the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, high-value letters, Colorado Farm Bureau, Utah Trucking Association, et cetera, that are becoming more and more important just in terms of an assessment, as the regulatory bodies assess these projects, those high-value signatures become more and more regarded, more highly weighed in the process. We actually did get a letter from your governor, Governor Gordon, as well. So, we have been working with them. The status of the project is that they have received their FERC certification. They have received all their 14 permits, starting from where the pipeline would come in, in Millin, Oregon, to the LNG terminal. But they're really getting jammed at the state level on their air and water permits. And so, we are working with Pembina. They're working behind the scenes. They've done a request to the federal energy, or excuse me, the Department of Commerce for override on the national interest that would circumvent the state's rejection of their coastal zone management permit. They're doing similar efforts to override their rejection of their air and water permits. We are in the process of helping put the political heat on Governor Brown, under whose purview these permits fall. We are taking out a full-page ad in the Oregonian, which is the primary paper in Portland, which is, this will happen this Sunday, May 24. We've got about 32 signatures, and it's not, We've got about 32 signatures. And it's not, it is, we're not leading with oil and gas industry, although that is, you know, obviously would be a primary benefit, but it is really focusing on the counties, the voices of the counties, the chambers of commerce, labor groups. So we've got about six different labor groups and counties in Oregon that are signing on to this, that are appealing to the Governor under the concept of, you know, we're, Oregon is probably gonna, we're waiting for economic data on, that will be released tomorrow. And my guess, it'll show probably half a million jobs lost in this pandemic downturn. And so we're appealing to the Governor under the vision of the Marshall Plan of New Deal projects to put America back to work and let this shovel-ready project go and put 6,000 labor jobs into play. You all are signatory to that. I appreciate that, as well as Lincoln County and Sublet County. And I will, and I think our press person had reached out to you, Commissioner Wendling, as possibly giving a quote for our press release. We're trying to drum up a lot of earned media around that as well. But any questions so far?
Andrew, Doc wanted to hear. I did receive an email, just got it late yesterday, and that, reading over those bullet points, and I'll get back with your individual regarding the media at the end of the day. Thank you.
Fantastic. But I think, you know, as we had put together our initial assessment of the potential for west coast LNG, the concept of exports through Mexico have become more and more prevalent. The state of Baja, California, Mexico, I neglected to say that, is also an MOU signatory. They are host to Sempra LNG, Sempra's a San Diego utility, $40 billion market cap. They have a two-phase project that they are just in the process of putting together. One is Phase One is turning around an existing regasification terminal for export. They're going into FID in Q2 of this year, at the end of Q2, and already have contracts in with Mitsui and Total. That's half a BCF a day. Phase Two will go into effect sometime further down the line, 2026, and that will be two and a half BCF a day. I think earlier in the project, in the, as the project was envisioned, they had thought that they were going to be taking Permian gas because of its low cost, because of its, the volume, eight BCF a day. But, and because of the deep pockets of some of the players there, you have ExxonMobil, you have Chevron that are producing there. I think with the current downturn in the market, in some of their earlier presentations, they had indicated that an issue of concern was the prospect that this gas was associated gas and thus subject to the vagaries of the ups and downs of international oil markets. They like the fact that the Rockies gas in our basins represented, and I neglected to say this, Green River Piantz, you went San Juan Basin, and to some respects, DJ Basin and Powder River. And they like the fact that that was dedicated gas production. I think with this current downturn, the shut-in of downturn in oil production, the Permian, as a result of the Saudi-Russia price war, I think that, you know, their fears are coming to, you know, coming forward, that they are kind of reinking their strategy, and we are engaged with them. Sempra is our newest member at the highest level, and we are forming groups with them on what the resource assessment is, what infrastructure needs are to get to Baja, California, Mexico, and what demand for gas is in northwestern Mexico, in that industrial area, which could be another half a BCF or BCF a day. So lots going on there. We are talking with the Foreign Ministry on becoming a member, as well as the State of, Foreign Ministry of Mexico, and becoming a member to our MOU, as well as the state of Baja, Mexico. We're going to need their help with some of the cross-border pipeline issues and export issues. As a matter of fact, Sempra has asked for our help in their permitting process with the government of Mexico. And we have a letter that we've created that is being reviewed by Governor Gordon's staff, Randall Luthy, as well as Governor Herbert's staff and the staff of Secretary Lujan Grisham. And we hope to get that into the Mexican Energy Ministry, which has oversight soon. So, we, as we have kind of created these campaigns, we've structured this around a 501(c)(4). We are a recognized (c)(4). We're actually headquartered in Wyoming. Our chair is the state of New Mexico. We have a vice, two vice chairs. I am the president. We have a secretary. We're waiting for the Wyoming nominee to be a part of our board. But I've been talking with Wyoming Energy Authority, Mr. Stiggy, about that prospect soon. Any questions so far on some of our efforts and our focus?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman? I feel that we should strongly support what he's talking about. I think that the quotes that you might be asked to provide, I think, are very, very timely, especially with the downturn in oil and gas, primarily our downturn in gas in not only Sweetwater County, but Sublet County and Lincoln County. And I think that it would be appropriate to point out that in a good year, oil and gas is roughly 40% of our economy, not only in Sweetwater County, but that's close to that in the state of Wyoming. So, anything we can do to support their efforts, I think we should do and appreciate them talking to us today. And I think that the request for you to provide a comment is very, very apropos. Appreciate that very much.
And just to share with you, Commissioners, that one of the bullet points does focus on jobs, creating jobs and that type of thing, which is, that one highlighted, caught my attention immediately because it directly impacts what we're trying to do here in the state of Wyoming. And it does focus on people versus anything else. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this is a membership request as well. We are funded by the states and counties. Our county members, Duchaine, you went to county, Commerce County, Wyoming, is a member, as well as Garfield, Mesa, Moffett, and Rio Blanco. And so I have membership requests, $5,000 a year membership from the county levels, at the county level. And I have those in with you all, with Sublet and Lincoln County as well, just to be a part of our coalition. Another thing that we are working on is when you look at the political challenges of these west coast public officials halting energy projects, a lot of it has to do with climate change, their public statements to that effect. We are in the process of putting together a study that was based upon an original study by the University of Calgary, along with MIT, Johns Hopkins, and Southern Methods University that looks at west coast natural gas from, exported from the coast of British Columbia, and examine 10 different power sectors in Asia, Taiwan, Korea, China, India, and what the impact of LNG displacement of coal would be, just in terms of overall emissions reductions. And just the bullet point from that is, west coast, north American, west coast, British Columbia, displacement of coal, Asian coal, by utilizing North American natural gas would result in emissions reductions of up to 60% greenhouse gases, as well as other, as well as other emissions. We are, have a statement of work and are putting together a funding proposal to the Colorado Mesa University, University of Utah, San Juan College in New Mexico to expand that study, to include western Rockies production, with a look at, and some modeling on upstream emissions, with the idea that we'll expand this study in that we will utilize it in the public debate. That study is, we're still kind of in the process of pulling together the pieces, but hopefully we'll have a study by the end of this summer that will utilize in the overall public debate on climate change. And frankly, North Americans' gas, the export of that gas and the contribution to reducing emissions in Asia, which are growing at an exponential rate. So that's another thing we're working on, as well as pulling together officials in Washington DC. We're having a number of webinars with Trump Administration officials. I just briefed the US Department of Energy last week to collaborate with them and to expand the concept as they are out advocating and developing diplomatic channels for gas. Most of the focus, as you can imagine, has been on Gulf Coast and on East Coast. The west coast option and the position of the west coast to supply Asian markets, which are going to be 80% of the markets in the years ahead. Those are, the China alone is a bigger market than all of Europe. And so that is the big prize that I think the Rockies states and Rockies gases in a position to capture if we can get a toehold on the US, on the North American west coast.
Thank you, Chairman.
The request for membership, I would think, might be more apropos if they would make that request of the coalition local governments, because what you do there is you pick up Lincoln County, Sublet County, Uena County, and the, as well as Sweetwater, as well as the other membership, the rest of the membership of that coalition. So I think that might be a better route to go, rather than just entirely on Sweetwater County. Maybe you're looking at doing that, but we're going to have a meeting Thursday. The coalition's going to meet on Thursday, and I'll bring that up at that meeting.
That would be great. That was actually suggested. I have given a presentation to Sublet, same type of webinar presentation a few weeks back, and they were going to pursue that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson and Andrew, I think, very, very good route to go. And it'll make the, it's really stronger because of that coalition of local governments. And there's also some high-powered legal support there as well. So I think I agree with Commissioner Johnson, if the other Commissioners would agree, is to allow Commissioner Johnson to take the membership to the coalition of local governments and go from there. What's your thoughts, Commissioners? Do you agree that that's where it should go?
I think that's a great place for it to go. I do think it's a good cause, but I think it makes sense to go that direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Smith, you okay with that? You're muted.
Space bourbon didn't work on that one. I don't know. No, I agree. It's a good cause. Andrew's fighting a good fight, and that's not an easy, not an easy road to be honed there. So I think any support we can give is, we should be giving.
All right. Mr. Shanefield?
I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's a good place for it to go, and I support it fully.
All righty. So with that being said, Andrew, are there any more questions for us?
No. I appreciate your all's, your time and consideration. I'll circle around with you once you've had a chance to talk at the coalition. Frankly, I'm available if that is a webinar meeting, or I would be available to brief that group as well on Thursday, if it's appropriate. One more thing is, I think, you know, in the near term, in the longer term, as we are kind of pulling, you know, putting up these structures, especially the prospective collaboration of the Mexico, Mexican government, that there will be opportunities for submissions to Asia. My planning is that we'll have a trade mission sometime in Q1, Q2 of 2021 that would utilize the state governments and the diplomatic channels that, frankly, the bully pulpit of those governors to advocate on behalf of their state's interests. And I'd like to bring along representatives from each of the basins as well. And so I just ask that you kind of put that on your long-term radar as a part of what we're going to be doing in the near and long term.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Certainly you keep us informed. And we'll let Commissioner Johnson run with this to Coalition of Local Government, if you're okay with that, Commissioner Johnson.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Andrew before we bid him farewell? Thank you, Andrew, and we appreciate you taking time to join us today and be safe and stay well out there.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Commissioners, with that, let's go back to our agenda and let's hit up Tab G, which is Mr. Legursky, and it's the Award of Firehole Road Repair Project. And I believe Mr. Legursky will be staying with us for the next two agenda items. Mr. Legursky, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Commissioner Welling. What you have before you is a firehole repair project. About four years ago, if any of you guys have driven down the firehole road from 30 years ago, it settles in places. We actually overlaid, spot leveled about six places down there. Last September, one of the spots fell about a foot and a half. I got a geotechnical engineer down there right after it happened. We blocked off a portion of the road, and we found some undesirable material about five to six feet down, extending to about 14 foot down underneath the road. And what this project is, is a fixed 150-foot section of road. It's a seven-day project. They're going to close down the road, advertise, close down the road, dig it out three foot and layer it with a geo grid every foot for the whole entire section, and then put base and pavement. So that's what this project is and entails. Kilgore was a low bidder for $126,470.03.
Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Commissioners, any questions regarding this firehole road repair project?
Gene, you say the material was bad. Was there, I would think that possibility there was water associated with that is, I have no problem whatsoever with what you're recommending, but it seems to me that probably water involved.
There was some water involved. It's actually a sandy material that's down there. And when it gets wet, it actually flows. So that's what it is. So as part of this, not only are we redoing it, but we're also redoing the ditches on the side to make sure that they adequately drain and fixing the four slope on the road to make sure that the water sheds off the road and gets through the culvert.
Any other questions, Commissioners? One question from me, Gene, is you believe this is, as long as Mother Nature works with us, this is a long-term fix?
Yeah, very long-term fix. This is a tried and true method of what's always done on soft spots like this. It's just, you don't try this first, you try it second or third because it's so expensive.
All right. Thank you. Okay, if there's any other questions for Mr. Legursky? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would move to award the bid for the firehole road repair project to Kilgore Construction, DBA Lewis &amp; Lewis, in the sum of $126,470.03 and 0.03, and authorize the Chairman to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Legursky, you're still up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What this is, is the BLM Right-of-Way Grant for a 400-foot Porsche, 400-foot Porsche Sweetwater Drive that connects the city of Rock Springs boundary to Clearview Acres. It's a Porsche road that we redid a couple of years ago. And what happened is we combined two grants into one. and uh, what happened is we combined two grants into one and then this is just the renewal of that grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Legursky. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Legursky? All right, with no questions, commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve the BLM Right-Away Grant number WYW121501 for a portion of Sweetwater Drive County Road number eleven fifty-five and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents. Do I hear a motion?
Done.
So moved by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All, everyone approves, second five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Will that work for you, Gene?
That'll work for me.
All right, you've got one more here. Tab J, which is MOU Summer 2020 Shared Staffing Agreement between Sweetwater County Events Complex and Sweetwater County. Go ahead, sir.
Um, what this is, is um, I think it's a kind of a benefit to how we've restructured uh, the county and everybody talking and, and, and doing different stuff and trying to find a common good. Um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Mr. McLean was in my office and found out um, that we were having a hard time finding summer employees, which is, which is weird. Um, I don't know if it's the whole COVID thing or something like that, but he, he mentioned um, the affair uh, might have to do some stuff with some full-time employees um, that they didn't want to do. So we reached out to them and, and got them engaged and they're willing to, um, basically what we're doing is uh, using three of their full-time employees, um, starting in hopefully tomorrow, if you guys approve it through October, um, to help us fill the gap that we have in the um, rec department. Um, so they can help us out and, and fill the stuff that we still need to do there, you know, mowing grass, painting, fence and sprinkler systems, all the stuff that they do currently at um, the fairgrounds. Um, uh, but they, they aren't doing as much now because of the financial situation they are with the COVID nineteen. So we were able to bring them on board and basically what we will be doing is through this MOU is uh, they will be billing us for their employees and we will just re, be reimbursing um, them. Um, it's just a lot cleaner. Uh, that way they have to take care of all the, you know, insurance and stuff like that and those employees don't lose um, what they've already gained there by switching places.
Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Uh, I noticed Gary was part of that. Gary, you have any comments on that?
Not really, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I think as, as I indicated to the board previously, there were a couple of county component units that were considering uh, layoffs as a result of events and other things being canceled. And um, so it, it seemed uh, a difficult situation for them to have to, to lay off people and then if uh, the events start up again to turn around and try to hire them potentially lose people that are already trained. Um, the, the work that they were doing for the events complex is, is fairly similar uh, kind of maintenance work to what uh, they would be doing for us. Um, and it seemed like kind of a win-win situation uh, for everybody. Um, so uh, yeah, I mean, that's a, the bottom line.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, just a quick comment. You'd mentioned when you were talking that uh, besides the events complex, there was other outside agencies or component units that, you know, we were able to uh, bring forward and help them out to keep them working. Do you recall which one that was?
Yeah, it was Southwest Counseling. That they were looking, um, I'm not sure where they've resided, but um, they were concerned about laying some positions off. Um, uh, and I haven't heard of, if there's any more with that. Those positions are uh, um, typically more in the counseling um, case management uh, areas.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. I, I think it's just a matter of people getting together and talking about situations and trying to make things work so that people, you know, can keep working and, and that's the big goal through all of this. So I uh, just want to say thank you to both you and Gene and, and that. So commissioners, other questions for Gary or Mr. Legursky?
Just make a comment also that I think it's uh, excellent that uh, the, the two entities are talking to each other and we're going to keep people working without laying them off. So uh, if it's appropriate at this time, I'd make a motion to approve the MOU for the Summer 2020 Shared Staffing Agreement between Sweetwater County.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I think it was, I couldn't tell. So Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith, you get it. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Laura, you had a comment before the motion.
I think that this is a great example of how we will be moving forward in the future um, to help our economy, to help our businesses um, and to get things done. So I want to commend um, our county employees as well as Sweetwater Events Complex on working through this and, and providing a, a solution that's going to help a lot of people in our community.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Shanefield. Commissioner Smith, did you have any more to say about it?
Just echoing the same comments, it's uh, it's, it is awesome to see the cooperation, the problem solving and just speaks volumes to the people of our county and uh, the people that work here that, that uh, really we, what, what, what these folks are doing are looking out for people and making sure that uh, they can do the best they can to keep putting um, you know, food on the table, money in the bank, whatever they, they need to do. And so wholeheartedly support it and uh, greatly appreciate the cooperation between a couple of departments and all those involved in making it happen. It's wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is one additional point uh, uh, to clarify. Um, the other reason that this came up is um, um, Mr. Legursky's done a, I think, a presentation for you on the facility management software. And as you know, the county owns all of the facilities, including the events complex, library, museum, and the county buildings. And um, part of where we're at right now is trying to get those buildings uh, into that management system. And the thought is going forward that, you know, have a better uh, handle on where uh, capital projects need to come from, maintenance costs, so on and so forth. So even the, the thought of moving these folks over may help a little bit in terms of facilitating that ultimate goal also, which is to build a county-wide facility management system. Um, so all the data on county facilities resides in one uniform database. I did, just wanted to point that out also.
Thank you, Gary. Any other questions, any other discussion? We, on the motion, in the second? With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So as we move on and I, and I'd like to commend you, Mr. Legursky. You got us back on schedule and we're even a couple of minutes early. So moving forward, we have Commissioner Shanefield and Commissioner Lloyd regarding strategic plant, planning under tab L. Commissioners?
Mr. Lloyd, would you like to present what you had sent out to Sally and I this morning?
Yeah. I'd love to. Um, I've sent out um, the official document that I've also shared with you guys a couple of meetings, a meeting or so ago. Um, and I, I actually spent a little time talking with Sally the other day and coming up with a plan of how to um, collate the information as it comes in, but um, Sally's going to help me disseminate, help Lauren and I disseminate the um, the information out to all department heads, elected officials, and I wanted to tie in the component agencies. Um, pretty simple survey. Um, uh, once we get that information, I'd like to maybe look at having a workshop um, the first or second meeting in July to start discussing some of the answers and how we move forward and where we move forward in a, in a positive direction. So I'm, I'm excited to see the information. Um, Sally, Lauren and I will meet the next week or so and have a discussion about um, the best way to collate the information that's come in. I've also, you reached out to the University of Wyoming um, um, outreach centers to maybe see if we can get some help and some other um, surveys and stuff we can create, uh, specifically one for maybe constituents in our community, um, and maybe even employees down the road as we kind of start to build what our vision and our strategic plan is. So I'm excited to say that I think step one um, occurs today as we get that information out the next couple of days to our department heads and elected officials. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Anything else to add, Mr. Shanefield?
No, um, I'm, I'm excited to see the results that come back and kind of give us some guidance on how our department heads um, would like to see the county moving forward. And I also look forward to engaging the community um, in how they would like to see um, our county government and structure moving forward so that we can build um, something for the best future for our county.
Very good. Thank you. Other commissioners, any questions for Commissioner Shanefield, Commissioner Lloyd? Well, with no further questions, continue moving forward and, and uh, we'll, we'll keep hammering on, get hammering this out and get something going. Appreciate the work two of you are doing and Sally as well. Uh, under tab, tab M, uh, Future Board of County Commissioner Meetings, and I put that under my uh, thing is I uh, based on um, well, the soft, I'll just say the soft openings and everything, but yep, uh, with uh, still some guidance from public health with that type of thing on uh, social distancing, number of people in the room. Um, it came to our attention for this meeting that the uh, commissioners chambers we presently have probably weren't the best place for the uh, meeting to have face-to-face because of social distancing or I'll just say because of uh, the recommendations for safety. So we decided to do a Zoom based on staff's recommendation to get that set up and then also requested staff to work with us for a uh, to take a look at other options and s- get those laid on the table. I believe uh, late yesterday, I did receive uh, documentation from uh, um, Gary McFlinley that was put together with the help of Mr. Legursky, Tim Knight, as well as our county attorney. The reason it was so late, it was in the hands of the county attorney just to see based on the statute that uh, commissioner meetings be held at the county seat. The question became is if uh, came up is if uh, we would exercise options of meeting in an area that would accommodate the needs and safeties of not only the employees that are part of the venue, but uh, citizens coming in. Um, we may have to have post the meeting or meetings off-site if that's the commissioner's request. So with that, uh, Gary, I'll turn it over to you. I believe Gene's on as well and uh, Tim is and so is John. So uh, you did get documentation by email late yesterday. I don't know if you had time to look at it before today. So Gary, what was yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basically what we did is, is met and discussed the options and uh, appreciate John DeLeon and kind of Danny uh, in scrutinizing the legal requirements for meetings. Just briefly, um, the, the statute eighteen-three-five-oh-two provides that the county commissioners shall meet at the county seat of their respective counties on the first Tuesday in each month or at such other times as may be designated by resolution of the board or when it is necessary to meet for the transaction of urgent county business. So um, that statute really expresses, I, I think, the intent that the, that the county commissioners are to meet at the county seat. Um, obviously in, in times if there was damage or uh, in, in public health emergencies or remodeling, um, there can be uh, meetings at, at other locations, but it's clear the intent is for the meeting uh, to be uh, at the uh, county seat. Um, so when we looked at, we looked at the room that you're in currently, um, and um, that's really option one. Um, we can accommodate all five commissioners with uh, six feet spacing. But before I say that, let me just clarify one, one point which John made that's important to note. Under the public health rules, there is an exemption for the transaction of a public business. So um, uh, if we cannot meet the social distancing rules or what have you, there is an exception uh, under the public health rules um, to exempt uh, government from some of those standards. We took the position that we uh, in setting an example for the community, should try to follow those things. So in, in looking at the room that you have, in order to get the six feet between there, um, the commission would have to be spaced out basically from the door going into where Sally's office is, around to an opposing side by the window. Um, not leaving room for the clerk, uh, Tim, uh, Sally and others that are currently in, in the room. Um, there, there are other ways to manage that. We could move them uh, to other rooms where they could monitor the, the meeting similar to the way they're doing now. Um, the other problem that's identified in that room is the stadium seating. Uh, the fixed seating is bolted to the floor. So uh, to space the seating as we do other places to meet the six-foot uh, guidelines and to allow the traffic to flow without being in those closed quarters um, is almost impossible within that room. Um, and so that's something that, that we think uh, should, should be addressed uh, going forth at some, at some point. Um, so we provided in the letter that's attached, a list of pros and cons uh, for that option. The second option that was presented um, is really the uh, to continue with the Zoom meetings uh, during the public health crisis period. Uh, that's the way we are today. Um, again, there's some pros and cons with that. Um, it, it, it generally complies with the Wyoming statute, um, but, but not precisely in that we're not meeting uh, physically necessary at the county seat, but it's closed. Um, it, it has access to a lot of the community because they can participate. Um, it does limit face-to-face meetings. There are some technical problems as we know from time to time. Um, I'm not pointing any fingers at Wally.
Um, thank you.
Yeah, um, and that not everyone in the community has access to technology um, um, that allows them to participate. We like to think that everybody, but you know, one of the goals of governments to try to provide access without socioeconomic uh, discrimination. So uh, we're sensitive to that. Uh, the third option uh, that we took a look at that sort of accomplishes a little bit of both is um, early on, uh, Tim and I had set up the EOC uh, headquarters over at the Sheriff's Department Meeting Room. Um, that room, for those of you that had a chance to be there and, and uh, certainly used it for the opening of the Justice Center, is a very wide open room. It has more modern sound systems, uh, plugins for computer. Um, so one of the thoughts is that we could easily accommodate the county commissioners with six-foot spacing in that room and a fair number of public. Gene, I think was doing some work on the exact numbers, but we could get uh, quite a few members of the public in there as well as the clerk um, and uh, the county attorney uh, and others. Um, option three, I think is really only an option, is a temporary uh, uh, situation uh, because of the statute, which really intends for the meeting to be back uh, at the county seat. So um, I think overall kind of the staff recommendation uh, at this point would be to consider uh, having uh, the meeting either at Zoom or the uh, Justice Center uh, and allow a month or two uh, to do a little remodeling of the main county room to get rid of the seating, uh, repair the carpet and make some corrections with the sound system so that the meetings could be conducted in there as has been done in the past uh, with the full capabilities of uh, Zoom and public participation uh, uh, in, in that room, using the meeting at the Justice Center as a, as a temporary location uh, during uh, that period. And the, you know, specific pros and cons of each of those is listed in the documents you have here. Um, Tim's on board. He has some, you know, he's uh, done all the work in analyzing the sound system. Gene's analyzed the space and of course, John has done all of the legal work for us. So if you have any questions, I think there's somebody available to answer them.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, is there any questions? Tim, do you have anything else to add?
So one of the things that uh, that we looked at was maybe doing some sort of hybrid type of meeting where you could bring in some through Zoom and some uh, in physical location. Uh, there are some challenges with the sound system and feedback and the way it's set up. And so in order to accomplish that, I would want to bring in um, someone who actually specializes in sound and AV and be able to do some sort of, uh, the ability to do a hybrid environment. So there might be an opportunity um, if we were to not be in that room for a period of time to actually accomplish that during the remodel. So that's another um, point to bring up.
Thank you, Tim. Gene, anything you have to add?
Uh, no, uh, I think uh, Gary covered it pretty well. Like I said, in the um, existing county commissioner room, uh, that carpet, it will be full of holes once we pull off the uh, the stadium seating and stuff like that. Um, you know, so we'll need to do something there and figure, and figure out exactly what needs to be done. Uh, but other than that, mine's a lot easier than Tim's.
All right, thank you. Uh, John, you're on. Uh, legally, we okay with everything we're talking about?
Yeah, I think um, of course, in, in, in talking with Danny as well, um, as he's working through all of the uh, with the E O C, et cetera, uh, he certainly um, supports um, you know, the, the, i- if the Zoom uh, meeting isn't the uh, choice of the commission, a uh, moving as, as quickly as you can um, over to the uh, regular county commissioners uh, room, uh, understanding that there is a temporary nature on the uh, uh, option three, as Gary has identified.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for any one of the staff?
A question to John. What you're saying, John, is that option three is the best as far as the legal issue is addressed?
Well, I, you know, I think uh, you know, option uh, two, which is at one and two, uh, both are, of course, at the county seat. Option three w- would be of a temporary nature, as Gary identified. And so you just want to be able to get uh, as quickly as you can over to uh, option one or two, uh, as, as the board uh, decides what they, what they prefer in that nature.
Thanks, John.
Other questions, commissioners?
Can I um, ask a, have we, have we any idea of a cost to do the renovations necessary in the commission room? Commission chambers?
Uh, Commissioner Smith, um, o- obviously, uh, we ha- have done some preliminary kind of back-of-the-envelope stuff. I'm not sure that it's at a point without knowing where the board was leaning uh, to put that down, but I would say that shortly, um, through our discussions, we could get a uh, proposal if the board is, you know, inclined to do that. Obviously, cost is a factor, and we understand that, but um, we did, we could get with some vendors. We talked about people that could supply the service. Most of the remodeling, I think the position was, could be done internally. Um, and uh, I think the main issue that we've been struggling with is the sound stuff. Uh, Tim basically took a P A system and rigged up what uh, we're, we're working today, and it makes it very difficult when you start bringing sound in from multiple sources to control feedback within a live meeting. Um, and I think if we're going to try to make a permanent solution, that's the area where we'd have to get some counsel um, and probably get the right equipment uh, in there, but we could get a, a bid back fairly quickly.
Thank you. I, my opinion, I guess, then would be, um, I would lean towards continuing Zoom until we were able to meet in our, our regular uh, our regular room that's renovated, so that, that would be my my thoughts, my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Uh, Commissioner Lloyd?
Mr. Chairman, this is Gene.
Yeah, go ahead, Gene.
Um, the only unknown that we do have is um, with everything, when we pull up carpet, we do not understand the makeup of the mastic um, that's on the bottom of it, so we have to actually get that tested. And that, that could sway the cost one way or the other, depending on how we have to remove that and what precautions we have to take when we remove it.
Thank you, Gene. Commissioners, other, other questions?
I, I think I would uh, lean towards what Commissioner Smith is saying, as much as I hate this computer. Uh, but I, I think that's the cheaper way to go, and uh, we're still here in the courthouse, and I think this works fairly well. And I think that if we do the renovations uh, in-house and crack the whip over Gene and his people a little harder, we could get us in there a little quicker, and uh, so I, I think I'd support what Commissioner Smith's saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you, the sentiment, sentiments. I think um, no reason to put in the additional work into the uh, option three. Um, if we're going to have to put in a work into option one to make it potentially work anyway, I think at this point, I would much rather be sitting in a room with you guys. I can't believe I said that out loud, that I would be on the computer, but I, I do think at this point, that is our best option.
Commissioner Shanefield?
I agree wholeheartedly. Um, I think that we need to move forward with option two, continuing the Zoom. Um, save us a little bit of money. And I mean, as much as we all hate to be on the computer, it is, I think it is working, um, and I think it does provide access um, to as many county residents as possible, so.
Well, with that, uh, if everybody's in agreeable, agreeable, we'll continue as, as we are um, op- continue operating the way we are through Zoom and uh, that type of thing, so I don't think we need to discuss it any further unless somebody feels real strongly, other than what they stated.
Uh, Commissioner Whitting, just to be clear, um, uh, is the, is the directive just to continue with Zoom, or should, would you like to have a uh, estimate back for the modifications to your existing chambers, such that the work could be done to move into regular chambers in the near future, uh, and do Zoom?
Commissioners, your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shanefield?
Um, I think we need to move forward with attempting to make the modifications to our chambers so that we can meet in person as soon as possible and get an estimate back as soon as we can.
Agreed.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'd say yes, do it.
Mr. Lloyd?
I'm on board.
Yeah, I'm aboard too. The uh, uh, go ahead, I'd say move forward and getting those costs, Gene and Gary, and then uh, uh, we'll take a look at those and uh, go from there, or, you know, if they're two, I'd like to see the cost before we really move forward to uh, because there's always been that conversation of uh, our chambers needing to be uh, updated and upgraded anyhow, so I, I, I'd hate to see us spend a whole lot of money on this and then realize it would have been better spent moving forward with a bigger one, but uh, let's go ahead and see what we can get done, okay?
We should be able to have something for next meeting.
Sounds good, Gary and Gene. Appreciate it. Tim, John, Gene, and and Gary, appreciate your work on this, and uh, we'll continue as we are till we hear more at the next meeting. Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? With that, uh, our next agenda item is uh, the scholarships for uh, this Board of County Commissioner, and uh, uh, we have a list of individuals, and in the past, we've handled those in executive session and then came out um, and awarded them. The reason we go into executive session is we talk about uh, students uh, ACTs. Well, basically, it's personal information, the names and that type of thing, although names will come out uh, when we award scholarships. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for scholarships. So moved by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second by Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, before we get started, let's take a five or ten-minute break for uh, take five or ten-minute break and be back here at uh, eleven forty.